The November 8, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. The Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to gather in this planning board meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve in the community, grateful for the chance to share our insights and hear the opinions and the concerns of the community regarding the events and the actions that we are considering this evening. Guide us in all that we do. Guide us that we might be attentive, be polite, and be able to come to a decision that will bless this county and the community and the people therein. We ask for this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Next is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as written. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign. There being no opposition, the agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for August 9 meeting and the September 13 meeting. These will be done under separate motion.
I don't think we have them. We did it the last time.
I make a motion that we approve the August minutes as written. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes and proceedings of the August 9, 2021 meeting. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign. There being no opposition, the agenda is approved. Next motion is for approval of the minutes and proceedings for the September 13, 2021 meeting of the planning board.
Mr. Chair, likewise for the September minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes and proceedings for the September 13 meeting. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign. Again, no opposition, so the minutes and proceedings for September 13 are adopted.
Paul, if we can hold on for just a moment. I just found out that the folks who are listening on streaming aren't yet able to hear anything. I'm going to check with Roy to see.
Okay.
I'm also booting up the system. Boyd, you can speak if they can hear you.
I'm Lynn Cochran. I'll be presenting tonight. I'm updating the computer that wasn't updated, and it's going to take a moment. Sir?
I'll find out if they heard. But continue.
Can we go ahead?
Yeah. All right. These are the procedures for the zoning cases that we'll be hearing tonight. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding his application. Following the applicant's presentation, those who've signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. I'd like to remind you all that whichever way the planning board decides on any of these rezoning cases, our decision is merely a recommendation to the county commissioners as the final decision on any rezoning rests with them. With that, we will have staff present our first case.
I'll be glad to begin our presentation. Boyd, are you getting worried about how we're sounding?
Yes, I see.
We're good? Okay. Thank you, Roy, for getting that fixed, and thank everyone for tolerating a little bit of a delay. That was mostly staff's fault and a little bit of the computer's fault. I'll begin with our first case for the evening. My name's Lynn Cochran. I'm a senior planner here with Rockingham County for the folks in the audience who do not know that. Our first request tonight is for case 2021-22. It's a request for a zoning map amendment, rezoning from residential protected to neighborhood commercial conditional district, tax pin indicated. Address is 7274 NC Highway 704, directly at the corner of Case Road, Township Madison. This is a conditional rezoning. This is the vicinity map. How are you guys seeing those colors? Are they any better than they used to be? They're good? Okay. Thank you. It's located in the far eastern side of the county, on the other side of essentially Mayadan. It's a little, sorry, western.
Western, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Your other west.
Thank you, my other wests, my other easts. Western side of the county, yeah, California's that way. Sorry about that. Whew, it's been a day. It's a little over a mile away from the Stokes County line as you travel 704, not as crow This is a close-up zoning map of the area. The scale here is about 1 to 4,000. You can see it's about half a mile there on the legend, so these are nearby parcels. You can see that there's a mix of residential protected, which is the subject parcel. There is also some industrial zoning in the area. I did some investigation with the tax department to see if these parcels are actually in use for the purposes for which they've been zoned. And it does not appear, according to aerial photography and tax records, that their original zonings, their approved uses are actually occurring at this time. Both look pretty vacant when you look at the history of those, so I cannot testify that there is active industrial activity going on. Well, not testify. I cannot assert that there is industrial activity going on on those parcels.
Are you referring to the property's L1 or LI?
LI, those LI parcels.
Cody Lane area?
Yes, sir. Yes. I wanted to do some thorough investigation about what might be happening in the area to report to you all. And those were rezoned industrial quite some time ago for different purposes. I had trouble finding the original records. That's why I contacted the tax department. My contact there was very helpful, as much as she could be. And we both went through the aerial photography and the tax records, as I mentioned, and could not come to a confirmed conclusion, a firm conclusion, that those uses are still in place. A sort of zoomed-out shot shows a larger picture of uses in the nearby area. Immediately, again, there's a lot of RP, RA, the light industrial. It's hard to see on this map, but in the very, very far upper left-hand corner, the northwestern corner, is a highway commercially zoned property. It's a little over a mile away. It was owned about a little over two decades ago, or a little less than two decades ago, for a compartmentalized storage unit. That use does appear to be in place.
It is.
Yeah, thank you. So I've done a little research. Additionally, to the east, you have Mayadan and you have Madison. And they're more complex mix of different types of residential, industrial, and even though you can't see it, sort of in the upper two-thirds on the eastern side, in the right-hand of your map, there are businesses zoned parcels. All of these things were taken into account as we evaluated this case and this request. I can discuss that more in a bit if you'd like. I did not include an aerial map with this one because the land use plan, future land use plan map, is essentially the same thing. There are no water features that affect this parcel. This area is located in the O2 rural land class of the county. O2 is primarily designated for low-density residential, agricultural, and related uses on developed and forested lands. Although the Rockingham County Land Use Plan and Future Land Use Map do not necessarily strongly support this request in this land use class, the plans do not weigh heavily against it either. There is no mention within the land use plan that commercial shall be prohibited or frowned against in this area, thus the conditional nature of this zoning request. The proximity of Madison and Mayadan to this parcel should be taken into correct consideration along with their zoning categories and along with other categories pointed out in the staff report. We're making a recommendation on this request. It's a little bit complex in having to make a decision. As you'll note from the staff report, which has been shared with the applicant and his associates, who is available to speak later, there are lots of cautions, lots of considerations recommended of conditions. Staff has recommended a couple of extra conditions in addition to the exclusionary conditions that the applicant chose. Those are not set in stone, as we know. The board may ask many questions of the applicants and request additional conditions that are reasonable and within the scope of any conditions that could otherwise be requested from other applicants. I will forward to a snapshot of the site plan. You all have been given a large format paper copy of this. The parcel acreage at this point is about three and a half. The site plan here does not indicate it, but the second page of specifications, I just wanted to mention, shows a reduction from the 3.6 acres to about 1.6 acres total for the project. So this site plan represents that 1.6 acres, unless I'm slightly mistaken and can be corrected by the applicant, which might be the case. Just wanted to be sure. The next slide is just a rendering that was provided by the applicant of what the store may look like. It might not look exactly like this, depending on conditions or requests that we have. I will leave it on the site plan. In the staff report, you guys have had a chance to review it in detail. You note that this was a kind of a long staff report compared to what I usually prepare because of the nature of this case. I'm sure that there are folks in the audience who are here who are signed up to speak. We've had approximately a dozen, maybe a few, a couple more phone calls. We have had several who are definitely voicing an opinion against this rezoning, they don't like it. We have had two who are for it. We have had more in the middle who just wanted some more information about what's going on. I just want to make a note in the end that in addition to the conditions, the exclusionary conditions that the applicant selected, planning staff, community development staff, is requesting two conditions be added to this zoning, one of which is to follow dark sky principles of lighting. In your packet, that is included. I did not include it in the slide set, but it essentially includes five points of lighting to help reduce impacts on neighboring properties and reduce light pollution. It should have a clear purpose and only illuminate directly where it's needed, that being the parcel. It should be no brighter than necessary. It should only be used when it is useful, and warmer tones should be used where is possible. Additionally, if you look at the site plan, the north, the sort of north-northeast boundary of that parking area, as the turn is proposed directly off of Case Road to the left there, we are recommending a reduction in the number of parking spaces there of 50% to increase an area for additional landscape planning, to minimize sheet runoff, and to help increase a barrier between some of the residential parcels and this one if it should gain approval for neighborhood conditional use. That's the basic summary of where we are now. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can, and if we need to consult with our attorney or Mr. Marziano, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Before we answer any questions, I want the record to show that board member James Fink has recused himself from this case because of a conflict of interest. Any questions for Mr. Cochran?
I have one. You go ahead. I have one.
Isaiah Cindy Hayworth.
Sure.
Lynn, could you give me the definition of spot zoning?
Spot zoning in North Carolina is very squishy, but essentially, when you folks as planning board members read the reasonableness and consistency statements, those four points that you read at the end of that are the very specific points that are involved in saying whether or not this parcel might be spot zoning. Spot zoning is not illegal in North Carolina. It's not necessarily smiled upon if we are going to zone a parcel in this fashion, and there is a question of spot zoning, which I did mention in my staff report, that this needs to be considered. We need to justify this with appropriate conditions, and we need to justify it closely enough with our land use plan to approve it. The sort of general definition of spot zoning is selecting a small tract in an area where the zoning is otherwise of an extraordinarily different nature without considering its relationship to the land use plan and any other adopted comprehensive plans. We've not done that, but those shadows do sort of, those shadows of spot zoning do sort of cast over this and should be considered and discussed, I do believe. Does that help? Okay.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes Julie Talber.
Lynn, in the site plan, you said there's no watershed?
It is not located in a protected watershed.
Okay.
Everything's located in a watershed. It's just not located in a protected watershed.
So there's, I don't see a plan for a retaining pond. What would?
The, there may be, depending on what, let me back up. So we don't have, as a county, a stormwater management ordinance. Therefore, we rely directly upon NC Department of Environmental Quality. If more than one acre is disturbed in any development in any district, the NC Department of Environmental Quality must approve an erosion and sedimentation control plan prior to grading, much less construction. We've talked about this, you know, many times. That would be this, in this case, that may be what happens. There may be a requirement for a retention pond. There may be a requirement for a dry pond. It would depend on what NC DEQ and, working closely in conjunction with DOT, will be agreed upon as the best way to control sheet runoff. There may be more specifics that the applicant could speak to as far as engineering. I did include in the packet, but not in the slides, the second large-scale existing site conditions map, if that's in there. Do you guys have that? You should. Hang on. It gives you a little bit broader picture of what the lot looks like. It shows the contours. Granted, in this format, those contours are pretty small, contours being changes in elevation and drainage patterns. Those will be taken into consideration by DEQ. Sheet runoff and retention will have to be maintained to prevent any sort of impact onto neighboring properties. That's the whole goal of water management on a parcel like this when it is outside of a protected watershed.
So we don't know yet if there's going to have to be either a dry pond or a retaining pond?
Not yet.
Okay.
That will come at the development stage. Commercial site plans like this are now subject to TRC review. This may have to go through TRC. It may not. It depends on how complex it gets. It could be administrative. If it looks like DOT and DEQ and others need to be more deeply involved, we may have to convene a TRC meeting. I'm sure the applicant will be agreeable to that if that is the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran? Thank you, Lynn.
Sure. Thank you.
At this time, we'll hear from the applicant as a representative from Terramore here. If you would, for the record, sir, please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Fox. I'm an attorney here representing the applicant, Terramore, tonight. My address is Suite 800 400 Bellmead Street in Greensboro. I have with me tonight two other persons that will come up and present to the board. One is Joe Strickland. Joe works for Terramore and is familiar with the site, can talk about Terramore, you know, as a company and what they typically do, can also talk about the proposed use on this site, and also discuss any questions that the board may have about the intended use. I also have Justin Church here with me tonight. Justin is a licensed professional engineer here in the state of North Carolina, as well as other states, and Justin has prepared the site plan and can answer any questions that the board may have regarding the site plan, setbacks, can answer the stormwater questions that board members may have as well. So I will make a few brief introductory remarks and then allow Joe and Justin to come up, and we'll all be happy to answer questions as the board may have it. We'll also be glad to come back up as the board sees fit. If there are questions raised by members of the public, we're happy to answer those as well.
That opportunity will come in rebuttal.
Thank you. We do feel that this is an appropriate zoning for this particular site. We have chosen to do a conditional zoning so that it can be molded to best fit the particular site. I would say that the applicant is in agreement with the two additional conditions that the staff has recommended. We're happy to do those, and those are already reflected in our site plan. We're also open to additional conditions as they may be raised in this hearing if there are things that we can do to make this a better project and a better zoning. We're certainly open to those. We do feel that this, you know, it being a neighborhood commercial zoning is a good fit for this area. There is a long history of these commercial uses in this type of residential and agricultural areas, going back to the old country stores that you used to dot the countryside. When I grew up, that's where you went if you needed something. Of course, they didn't carry as much and they didn't, you know, stay open as late, but this is the new country store, so to speak. You know, I have property that is very near one of these, that I have a home on. My parents have one that's nearby as well, and it's generally found to be very convenient for the community to be able to go in and pick up a few items as they need. It is truly, I feel, a neighborhood serving asset in that, you know, it's not a destination, per se. People don't drive 25 miles or 15 miles to go to a neighborhood serving business like this. They mostly use it on their way to and from somewhere if they pass by it, or if they live nearby, maybe they choose to run, pick something up that they might need. It's a more, it's a convenience and generally well-received in the areas where they're located. So we're happy to be able to bring this opportunity to this area and thankful for the staff report. Your staff is very good to work with. As you note, they gave a very thorough evaluation of the site and the area surrounding it. We do feel like that the transportation situation with the road, the intersections, it is a good location for this type of business as well. And of course, you'll note in the staff report, they have weighed things heavily, but they do recommend that the board consider approving this. With that, unless there are other questions for me, I'd like to ask Mr. Strickland to come up and talk a bit about Terramore and the proposed use.
Okay, let's do that. Let's have Mr. Strickland. All right, Joe.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, planning board members. Joe Strickland, Terramore Development, Director of Operations, North Carolina, 214 Clumac Road, Salisbury, North Carolina. I represent Terramore in North Carolina. We look after about 23 counties here, and your county being one of them. We've built a store, a couple stores in your area. I think the latest one was over in...
Are you guys having trouble here?
Yeah.
Okay. I might need to adjust the microphone. Sorry. That's okay. Sometimes it can be a little tricky. Just lean into it.
Thank you. Yeah, we built a store here in Reedsville. We just finished it up back in the spring, late spring, early summer, and we were before you guys last year. So, you know, thank you for the opportunity. But Terramore is based out of Thomasville, Georgia, and we're preferred developer for Dollar General. We look, like I said, we look after, you know, 23 counties in North Carolina, also work in Georgia and Florida as well. We've built over about 400 locations to date, Dollar General stores, between the three states that we work in. We hope to bring about, with the improvement of the property, about $1.3 million with a tax value of improved property. And the sales projection on this store is about $1.2 million in revenue. Our, you know, our store should operate with about seven to nine full-time employees, and we will use local vendors and distributors to stock and fulfill the needs of the store as well. This store here is going to be the new DG Fresh, what they call a DG Fresh, and a lot of stores you see is 9,100 square feet, you know, 70 by 130, but this will be the new wooden prototype that you've seen out in Summerfield area. This would be the gable-type building, 10,640 square feet, offer more grocery selections, more essential needs for goods for the family, you know, clothing, things of that nature. And in some cases, the store, some stores do sell fresh produce, but we can't, you know, say that this store will be one of them because it's really about market and the ideals they have back in Tennessee. But there's, you know, there is a need for the area out there, you know, for this type of goods. I mean, like Mike said, this store essentially takes the place of the old mom and pop's old grocery store, you know, general store is out in the rural type areas. But the store will offer, you know, fresh dairy, cheese, eggs, things of that nature, fresh bread. And, you know, like they were talking about our site plan a minute ago. Mike alluded to it, and I think Lynn did. You know, we've already contacted a lot of the local agencies, NC DEQ being one of them, and that's why we hadn't already been before the board, you know, already, is we had to jump through some hoops with those guys. I mean, they forced our hand there to put a center turn lane, a left turn lane into Case Road there, and that's been, you know, approved with DOT already, so that's got to happen in order for us to move forward with this project. And, you know, some of the site plan, I mean, I know it's small print, but we do show a fence around the entire, you know, property that will border the residential properties left over next door to us, and we can also include some Leeland Cypresses there if needed. But I'm here to answer questions. If you need anything, if not, I will let Justin Church follow up on that.
Any questions for Mr. Strickland?
Well, why was this particular site chosen?
Dollar General actually chose the site itself. It showed up on our strategic site map that it would be a good area to fulfill. I mean, you know, they look at an area, they look at, you know, households, rooftops, they look at traffic, traffic generators, things of that nature. With it being located that close to Stokes County, you know, they thought that it would be a good fit for the area.
It's just a couple more miles, and you're right in, right in Mayadan, right in town, though. I mean, it's really, pretty close proximity to town.
Yeah, it is. Yes, sir.
Okay.
About, I think the closest store for us is about 5.3 miles, if I am mistaken.
3.1.
By road miles. I'm sorry. Not by the way the clerk... Not by the way of the clerk for us. Yeah, they wouldn't be within...
3.1 to Medan.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, but please, audience, no interruptions while someone's speaking. If you've signed up, you'll get your chance. Otherwise, please be quiet while someone's speaking. Thank you. Now, let's hear from Mr. Church now.
My name is Justin Church. I have an office at 1520 Metavee Drive in Wilkesboro, North Carolina. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I'm the engineer of record for this particular project and have served as so for well over $100 general projects. So, pretty familiar with how to design these stores safely and meet the needs of the community. This particular site, we spent a fair amount of time with Mr. Cochran, going through the county's unified development ordinance to make sure that we could fulfill and meet those requirements with the amount of space that we have here. We feel confident that we are doing that. Joe alluded to it already that we've had pretty extensive conversations with NCDOT, and that's with the geometry you're seeing of the road improvements for the left turn lane into Case, that's all being generated as a byproduct of those conversations. To address some of your stormwater concerns, like Mr. Cochran said, of course, we would be, we will definitely disturb, should the project be approved, we would have more than one acre of disturbance. So, we would be required to procure an erosion control permit, and for this particular site, that would be reviewed by NCDQ, likely the Winston-Salem Regional Office. There are no ordinance post-construction stormwater requirements here, but we do recognize our duty to be good neighbors and not create issues for adjacent properties. So, typically, when we have a site like this that doesn't necessarily have an ordinance requirement for post-construction stormwater, we normally make plans to leave as many of our erosion control measures in place as possible to fulfill that and sort of serve that detention purpose that you've alluded to, even though we don't necessarily have an ordinance requirement to do so, we still try to be good neighbors and do that as much as possible. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about this particular site that you might have.
Any questions by the board members for anyone from the Terramore group? Okay, thank you. Again, I remind you, you'll have an opportunity for rebuttal.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We have an awful lot of people signed up to speak on this case, so I'm going to try to limit everybody to just three or four minutes. First, we'll hear from Mike Wilkerson. And if you would, sir, before you begin, please state your name and address.
I am Mike Wilkerson. I live at 201 Case Road in Madison, North Carolina, about one-tenth of a mile from the store that they're proposing.
What you'd like the planning board to know?
A couple of things, actually. The attorney, I'm sorry, sir, I can't remember your name, alluded that Dollar General is basically taking over as mom-and-pop stores, but the only problem is mom-and-pop stores are locally owned, such as Lonnie's Filling Station, which isn't headquartered in Goodlettsville, Tennessee, such as Dollar General is. He also alluded to the fact that the proximity of other stores, so a quick Google search, which took me all of one minute, and then five miles of this site, there's two. Within 10 miles, there's six. Within 15 miles, there's 13 stores. Now, I'm pretty sure that's convenient for everybody already. There's no need to have another one here, not to mention the fact that if you look on this map, I don't know if any of y'all are aware of Case Road, ever been down it, but I travel it every day because I live there. You're hard-pressed to get two vehicles to pass each other without just about butt and toes, let alone a 53-foot tractor-trailer. It just, it ain't going to work. And it's just, like everybody else, pretty much is behind me. We don't need it, and we don't want it. Thank y'all for your time.
Wait a minute, we have questions.
Okay.
How long have you lived at your address? Any other questions for Mr. Wilkerson? Name and address, please.
My name is Adria Stewart.
Oh, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Mm-hmm. I live at 201 Case Road. I'm the property owner there for the last 12 years. I bought the property as a rural place to raise my two sons as a single mother. I did not buy that property to be close to town, to be close to a commercial property at all. I have 12 and 1/2, almost 13 acres for my boys to run, for my dogs to run, for us to be able to go and deer hunt in our backyard, to fill meat in our freezer. That won't happen if you put a Dollar General in front of my house. The deer will not come. The lights will affect that. It will affect the traffic on my road that my youngest son is getting ready to drive on. That road, as Mike said, is narrow. When two cars meet, you have to slow down to make that. Tractor trailers coming into that road are going to be a problem when I'm trying to leave with my sons to go to work, to take them to school, and when they drive the road. And if you put a turn lane in on 704, you're going to have to widen that road because it is also a two-lane, narrow road, which is going to take in more property with houses almost on the road anyway. You're taking away from the neighborhood that does not want this. We chose to be rural for a reason. We do not need a Dollar General when we can have one five miles down the road. We did not choose our property for convenience. We chose it to be rural. If we needed convenience, we'd have lived in town. I'd have lived in Greensboro, where I'm five minutes from anything else. I chose to be rural for a reason. I do not want the Dollar General in my backyard or within sight of my property. It's not going to be safe. Regardless of what turn lane you put in or how you widen the road, you're going to be right on top of houses if you do. I don't want it in my backyard. I did not buy this property for this.
How far is your house set back from the road? Approximately?
Approximately from me to that wall.
So, 25 feet, maybe 20 feet. Any questions for Ms. Stewart? Sharon Ellis. I know I mispronounced your first name.
Sharon.
Shannon.
Sharon, with an R.
Oh, Sharon, okay.
My name is Sharon Ellis. I live at 188 Ryerson Road in Madison. I spent the first 25 years of my life growing up on 704. Although I live a short distance away now, my parents still live there, and they're here today. They've lived there for 47 years. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my parents, my family, all the neighbors on 704 and Case Road as well, and anybody else that this Dollar General construction directly affects. I come to you today to ask your support of Rockingham County neighbors and constituents and to vote to not support the rezoning of this land. This stretch of 704 in Rockingham County is residential, as you saw just a bit ago, and it was clear, based on what we learned just a minute ago, that rezoning this piece of property would be frowned upon anyway, typically, the spot zoning. So, anyway, the corner of Case Road and 704 in particular is a rural residential area. It's well outside of city limits, and putting a Dollar General here will completely change the dynamic of this area. Neighbors in this area either built their homes or purchased their homes over the years with the intention of living in a rural area, just as Adria just mentioned, again, outside of city limits, where there are neighbors or other homes, not Dollar Generals or the likes thereof. The gentleman just a minute ago kept mentioning, you know, like, country stores are being a thing of the past. It's not a thing of the past. We have Lonnie's Texaco just right up the road. It was there, you know, all the years for me growing up. Mom would pack my lunch and realize, oh, we're out of ham. You go up to Lonnie's, and Lonnie would fix you a sandwich right then and there. People still stop in there to get, you know, things for their kids' lunch or, you know, quick breakfast. If you need some milk or some bread, you go to Lonnie's. It's just, I don't, I don't know if they rode up the road to see how close that is. It's what, maybe one mile from this site. You're hurting small business by allowing this Dollar General there. If neighbors want a new bathroom rug or a tuba lipstick, they're fine with driving 3.1 miles into town to pick those things up. We don't need that in this neighborhood. Growth is important for our county and our towns, but we need the right kind of growth. We need you guys and those involved in planning and zoning and those who have the final say to support your citizens, support the right kind of growth. We need growth in our towns within city limits, not our rural areas. We want to keep these rural areas just that. We need our already established and struggling small businesses to prosper. There are already two established Dollar Generals within just a few miles drive of this site, just as Mike mentioned as well. In addition to that, there's multiple other dollar and bargain stores as well. So, in addition to all the dollar stores that Mike just mentioned, we also have Family Dollar 2.6 miles away, Dollar Tree in Madison, three miles away, Roses, three miles away, and Dollar Tree in Medan, 5.5 miles away. Do you see a trend here? It's insanity. This plan also poses a serious safety concern. The speed limit on 704 has always been 55 miles an hour. Recently, the speed limit was reduced to 45. However, that is neither followed or enforced, and even if it were, it would not make the traffic dynamics any safer. If you're familiar with 704, right at Case Road, and you can see it, the curve in this drawing here, you would know that there's a sharp curve. It has resulted in so many wrecks over the years. Most all of these wrecks have been a single-car accident, with cars losing control in the curve and ending up in our ditches, our yards, or in the tree lines. With the influx of this traffic slowing down to pull in or cars pulling out, I can guarantee you this already dangerous area will lead to major accidents and fatalities. When it does, I'll be the first to give you guys a call on the planning board and let you know about it. In closing, I'd like to ask you all, how many of you live in a residential area outside of city limits? If you don't live outside of city limits in a residential area, maybe it's your parents, maybe it's your son or your daughter, maybe your grandchildren are being raised in a residential area outside of city limits. If you would not support a Dollar General next to your own property or in the backyard of your loved ones, then do not support, do not support putting one in ours. Thank you.
Hold on one second. Any questions for Ms. Ellis?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
Ms. Ellis, was there a community meeting with the developer? Was there any contact from the developer to anyone in the community?
My parents were not contacted. There is a sign, a very vague sign, at the property.
And what does it say?
Meeting tonight. No, it doesn't even have the date. It just says rezoning hearing with the address.
But in other words, there was, there was nothing, the, there was no reach out from the developer or anyone about the Dollar General to the community, the surrounding...
I can only speak on behalf of my parents, but they were not contacted, and they live just a few houses down from this site.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Ellis.
Hold on, one more.
Ms. Ellis, you are here, as you said, to represent your parents. Where exactly do your parents live?
They live just a few houses down from the site.
Their address?
So, you have Case Road, and then right next to that is Cardinal Road, and they're just three houses down from there.
So, they live on Cardinal Road?
No, they live, they live on 704.
Yeah, they live on 704.
I mean, probably, again...
7175.
Yeah, they're at 7175 704. So, maybe, what, two-tenths of a mile from the site?
Right. Thank you.
Cindy, I just want to make one quick point. The sign, not about a meeting. Microphone. The sign, ah, yeah, it's working. The sign is the standard sign that we posed if there is a rezoning or a public hearing of some sort. We're sort of constricted by law as to how much information can go on that for privacy reasons and for others. So, it's not the most helpful, but anybody can give us a call and that kind of thing. I just want to make sure that there was no confusion, that it was some other type of sign, that was our sign.
I would just ask you guys to please support us in not, in not supporting this because the only people that are benefiting from this plan are the developers, whoever selling the land to the developers. The neighbors are not benefiting from this. Again, we already have a store to run to for things, grocery-type needs, and then we have our stores within city limits that we can get other things from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for staff.
Yes, sir.
The issue of the road, Case Road, to be specific, has come up three times already. What is the width of Case Road right now? Is it a 20-foot? Why?
I will be honest, I do not know.
24-foot?
Exactly how wide the roadway itself is, the right-of-way is 50 feet.
The subject to...
Right-of-way is 60 feet.
And maybe, is it 60 things?
The right-of-way is 60 feet, but the road is by no means...
It's very narrow.
Yeah, it is a narrow road.
There's not a lot of marking on the line.
I'm sorry, one person.
They don't even have a sunblock on them.
Right, right. I didn't notice that, yeah. So...
Hold on one second.
Go ahead. Yeah.
The minimum is 10, 10-foot on each side of the center line.
It's very narrow.
It's not 10-foot?
Yep. Ah, he should.
About 20 total.
He should.
Would the engineer not know this?
It's a very narrow road.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on for the road for now. Perhaps we can get that answered in another way. In the meantime, let's hear from, is it Chad Nelson?
The sand's right here, 60 feet.
Yes.
And again, if you could just keep it to like three or four minutes.
Okay, yes. My name is Chad Nelson. I am one of the mom-and-pop store owners in the area.
Your address, sir?
Address is 7730 NC 704, and I reside in Stonewall, 140 Salem's Lane, and I'm one of, I pass three Dollar Generals either way I go, takes me 12 miles to and from work. But my belief is that Dollar General not being in this area, first of all, is the highway safety concerns, as been mentioned, loss of community wanting to move out. I've done talk with local ones, talking about selling property if it is passed, noise pollution for the homeowners, runoff, loss of privacy for the tax-paying homeowners. The appearance of the stores is fine on the outside, but what I ran into even dealing at Dollar Generals, now I go in in Stonewall, there's, they can't even maintain the insides of them at times. There's aisles blocked, trash blowing around in the parking lots, you know, things of that nature. In my business, I try to keep the appearance. I run a gas station convenience store, which is, I have a garage on one side, small convenience store. It's been there since the 1950s.
Are you the Lonnie everyone's...
No, Lonnie was my father. He passed away. I assumed the business when he passed. Nine, will be nine years ago next month, matter of fact. But anyway, long story short, everyone comes to our store. It's a hangout. We service cars, do state inspections, but I also have grocery items, loose pinto beans, honey, anything in an old country store. I have wooden floors, you know, but we're the ones that are being forced out by the new Dollar General. I sell produce, anything, you know, anything and everything that you, I don't have clothing, things of that nature, but, and many citizens have come around me, you know, voicing their opinion. Even during the COVID, they have helped me, you know, I was in a central business, stayed in business, and that's why now I feel that the Dollar General for this area, especially for the people in the, around, that it's just not a fit for the community. Especially, my mother lives right down the road, right below the Millers that Sharon and Shannon was, Sharon was, excuse me, was talking about. She lives at the corner of Case School Road and Cardinal, which is about a mile from my store, a mile and three tenths, but about a half a mile from the... my store, a mile and three tenths, but about a half a mile from the projected Dollar General. And, you know, and we're just thinking of property values, what is it going to do to the property values around the area also? But that's why I think it's not a good fit for the area.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Could we hear from Jeff Walker? Good evening. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Jeff Walker, 7250 Highway 704.
And what is it you'd like the planning board to know?
I've worked that land. It's full of clay. Me and the Pockets live right below where they're trying to build this, I mean, right next door. And it is uphill. I don't know if they come and looked at it. It is uphill. It's going to drown us if they pave it, just the water runoff. And I didn't see anything about a retention pond or anything for the water runoff. And I bet there's been 15 or 20 wrecks in that curve. I live in that curve, and I've pulled more than one person out of a tree that is wrecked there in that curve. It just doesn't need to be there. I'm against it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Walker?
I have a question. Where in proximity do you live in, in front of or beside it or?
It'd be two houses from where they want to put it.
Okay.
And I live right in where they're talking about that curve.
Right.
And they wreck there all the time without your single car wrecks.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would it be helpful if I back up to a slide that shows a closer-up version of the parcel so people can sort of identify?
If you wish.
Okay.
Yeah, we have the luxury of the maps. They don't.
This might be helpful for some folks to, when you're asking about proximity, to say, hey, that's my parcel there, below such and such, that kind of thing.
All right, could we hear from Gray Bowles?
Good evening.
Good evening, Gray Bowles, 300 Case School Road, Madison. I lived there for 45 years, and this map is not a real good indication of that curve. And I'm pretty sure all the neighbors will attest to that. I'll start off first and foremost by saying that I'm opposed to this. I have property within 1,000 feet of it. I own 30 acres. It's a big square to the top right corner. The gentleman that come up and spoke, none of them were from our area. They were from Greensboro, Salisbury, and Wilkesboro. So they pretty much do not know what's in the best interest for our community. Can you go back one slide, please, to the one we just had up?
We should actually see the site plan fund?
Yes, sir.
Is that the one?
Okay. That one there. Okay. And the reason I say that is, first off, if you're going to build a Dollar General in our community, you ought to know the, the name of the city that you're building it in. If you look to the right side of this, right under Dollar General, it says Maedan. This is actually Madison. So that tells me there, they really didn't do their homework. They did just change our speed limit to 45. The gentleman also alluded to the, the fact that they're going to put a fence up possibly around this Dollar General. So for those neighbors, does that fence go as high as the lights so they're not affected by that after hours? Produce, we have Checkers within three miles, which is another convenience store. I've shopped at Lonnie's Texaco for 45 years, before it was Lonnie's. My kids stop there in the morning and buy gas on the way to school and charge it. I go in and pay for it later. Your map said Maedan, so you should know your community. We have a country store, like I said, Lonnie's. Everybody's already alluded to it. We got a Dollar General 3.2 miles, 4.1 miles, and Sandy Ridge at 10 miles. We also have got a food line if we really need our groceries, two miles. And then also, Ms. Hayworth, I think was her name, you ask about spot zoning, just like the other gentleman, I use Google, everybody else does. Spot zoning is an application of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a large zoned area when the rezoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan and current zoning restrictions. Also, people ask, is spot zoning bad? Spot zoning refers to applying a map classification for purposes of municipal zoning ordinance to a particular parcel of land regards to its surrounding designations. That is a bad thing, not a good thing, because it may smack a favoritism towards a particular land owner. That's spot zoning. I am totally opposed to it, and I'm not for it at all.
Okay, I have a question for you. Since you live so close to that corner, Case Road, we.
I'm on, excuse me, I'm on Case School Road.
Oh, Case School Road.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you happen to know what the speed limit is on Case Road?
Oh, 45. Case Road? I have no idea. I don't even know if they have a speed limit sign. More than, the speed limit on 704 just got changed within the last three months to 45.
Okay.
Case School Road is 45. Case Road, I'm sure there's not a speed limit posted.
Case Road is a dead end road.
It's dead end.
Accelerate till you can't go any further, is that it?
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
Just keep driving till you hit a tree, I guess.
That's, that's, that's why they call it a dead end. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bowles? All right, thank you, sir. I've got some names that have been crossed out here. Carl Lambert, did you want to speak or your name was crossed off here?
No, sir.
William Watkins?
William Brandon Watkins, 151 Patrick Drive. And if this gentleman could back us back up to the other map, I can show you where I live at.
Okay. Does that help?
That's it. You see Cardinal Road, I'm straight across Cardinal Road there, it says Patrick Drive. It's 20 acres there. My neighbor, Ms. Jane Price, is 135 acres right across the road from it.
Okay.
As one of the gentlemen said earlier, I deliver for UPS, and I've walked in many Dollar General stores and them to trashiest places I've ever been in. And 79 full-time employees I don't see. If this place was coming in, it was going to benefit our community, bring in lots of jobs, good-paying jobs, I could see that. I don't see nothing but trash. When I see a Dollar General, I despise to go into one because the outside, the inside, he's talking about a new outside store, that's fine, Danny. He said he lives next to one, that's fine, Danny. I don't want to live next to a Dollar General. From what I've seen, and it's not going to benefit me, because you put a Dollar General that close to my house, I will not go. Lonnie's is up the road, I can go to Lonnie's. If I want produce, I can go to Checkers, and if all else fails, I go to Food Line. It's been said and said and said, there's enough Dollar Generals close to everybody. If you need something that bad, you should have stopped earlier. If you can't get your groceries somewhere else, we don't need a Dollar General that close. And I'm, this gentleman's a lawyer, he said 3.6 acres down to 1.6 acres. If you look at that map right on, there's one little stretch of land that comes off the backside of it, that's included in it. I have a hard time seeing them putting a Dollar General and 80-foot of tractor-trailer coming into a store off of Case Road and safely getting in and out of that thing in the middle of the night, first thing in the morning. And if you widen that road, that's going to put more curve. Because if your plan, the drawing showed, you'd have to widen more to the left to the Dollar General property. It wouldn't go to the right to Ms. Price's property, it would come back over to there. And that would, to me, would put more, more curve and make it even more dangerous for the idiots to drive up and down the road every day anyway. And I'm as well as the rest of them for slow lights at nighttime.
You'll never stop.
The floodlights from a Dollar General shining in my house, Jeff's house, Mr. Walker's house, you'll still come down to David's house. So I'm, I'm against this thing. I don't see any need to have a Dollar General that close to another Dollar General. If you look at the one on 220, it's 4.8 miles to the one on Hunter Street in Maedan, I mean Madison, 2.5 or something to the next one in Maedan, three miles. I just don't, I'm, I don't see it.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Watkins? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Also crossed out on the list is Stephen Dodson.
I accidentally signed the wrong form. My apologies.
Then could we hear from Ann Puckett, please? Good evening.
Hi.
For the record, could you please state your name and address?
Yeah, Ann Puckett. I live at 3655 NC Highway 704, but we own the property at 7260 NC Highway 704, which is directly adjacent to the property that's for sale.
Got you.
This is really hard for me because that property owner is a good friend of mine, so I hate having to be here to do this, but you're looking at moving the most restrictive land use, residential land restrictions, and turning it into a conditional commercial property. Okay? We don't need it up there. There is not, you know, one of the reasons you would do something like spot zoning is if you had like a food desert. You know, we don't have that. We have availability through Lonnie's, through Checkers, through Food Line, through all the Dollar Generals everywhere else. Jeff was concerned about the, Jeff Walker was concerned about the water runoff. We have a sand filter septic system in our front yard at that house. Okay? If you're going to widen 704, your choices are to go to the right where you basically have 10 feet before you're in somebody's little apartment unit they have there, or you're going to go into my yard, which is going to go into my septic field. And if my, if we have trouble draining with ours, what is it going to be like for them? And I don't know that a retaining pond is going to take care of it. I don't know what a retaining pond is going to look like. My husband's family has owned that property since 1940, so we're very invested in the area. It's like you, you leave Maedan and you're out in the country, and that's how all these people who, you know, who live there and love living there want to keep it. My house is the one, mine and Jeff's, get the wrecks in the yard all the time. And if you're going to put a turn light, I, I don't know what you're going to do. I don't know how you're going to do it. Case School Road, or Case Road is a dead end, so you don't have any traffic that's going to leave going that way. So all the traffic coming in and out is going to funnel onto Case Road from 704. And I don't, I don't think 704 can handle it. I don't think it needs to handle it. It doesn't add anything to our community. And the one thing, you know, Rockingham County is known for its, its beauty and for being rural, and, and we don't want to lose that. And that's what, you know, and Lonnie's, you'll put Lonnie's out of business. You know, you don't have many mom and pop stores anymore. That's Americana going, you know, going away. And, you know, I think the majority of the people here would like to keep that.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Puckett? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Puckett also mentioned once again that used the term spot zoning. This case is not about spot zoning. The land use plan neither encourages nor discourages this kind of development, so it's not a case of spot zoning. We have one last speaker signed up, and that's Amy Collins. State your name and address.
My name is Amy Collins, and I reside at 7274 NC Highway 704. That's the property in question. Yes, this is difficult because these are my neighbors, and obviously I won't be able to live in the same spot if a Dollar General is put on it. I've lived there since 2015. Prior to that, my ex-husband and I had owned the property as investment property. Honestly, a lot of the, several of the people around me rent, they're tenants, so there is, some of the property owners do not live right specific. Some do, I'm just saying, some do not. I personally, I love Dollar General. I shop at all of them. I think they're great stores, and I think that they're a good replacement mom and pop. I'm sorry to Lonnie's, I've never even been in there. I don't go to, I should, but anyway, I, I'm just saying, you know, I normally, I work in Greensboro, so I travel toward Checkers and, or to Maedan or to Madison, and even shop at the Dollar General on 220. I think that their selection is good. I know during the pandemic, I felt more comfortable going into a smaller store as opposed to the big box stores. I think if, if there's any business that's going to be taken away, it will be taken away from Food Line or Walmart, not Lonnie's. I think that when the weather's bad, I know I don't like to get out on the streets. It would be nice to have something close by and convenient to be able to get the paper towels, the toilet paper, a loaf of bread, or whatever, you know, medications. They do carry clothing and gift and seasonal decor as well. I don't know. Anyway, the jobs, there could be people in the neighborhood that would be able to walk to their work. That would be, you know, if they hire locally. And I'm an accountant by trade, and obviously I look at property tax value and sales tax revenue for the county. I have lived in the country since 1989 in this county, so I do understand the being in a rural area. One of the things that I love about being outside the town limits is because of the lack of restrictions. There's no homeowners association, there's no covenants, there's no rules. You don't get beat up if you don't mow your yard to a certain inch, and they tell you where to, what color to paint your house or anything like that. They don't say who or cannot live there. We have farms down 704, Cardinal Road, Case School Road. There are farms, there's single-family homes, there's multifamily homes, there's manufactured homes, and there's mobile home parks, all in that little couple-mile stretch. There are businesses and churches, used auto sales lots, engine repair shops, furniture store, auto mechanics, the gas station, and a meat processing plant. I would go to Triad Meat to get meat there and to use the local people as opposed to, especially again during the pandemic, because I felt safer shopping in smaller stores. There are a variety of zoning areas, as you can see from the map, and they're helpful to accommodate all our neighbors, not just specific neighbors.
Could you try to wind it up here?
I will. Everything else is talked about, traffic. Again, I think everybody said that it's convenient, not necessarily a destination. I guess that's all I have to say, except thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, I have one question for you. Is it your land?
Yes.
That Taramore is looking to purchase to do this?
Yes, I am the property owner.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Chair recognizes Julie Talbott.
Ms. Collins, you said you, you actually live on this property?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you've lived there since 2015, did you say?
Yes.
But your original intention was to, for resale value or, or investment?
I ended up with it in a divorce. My ex-husband and I had purchased it.
As a?
As investment property. Yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Collins?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes Dylan Moore.
Was the house built there, did you build the house or was it already there?
The house was built in 1942.
Okay.
We purchased, David and I purchased it in 2006 from Lily and Gan Knight. Sam Gan built that house, as he did many others in that area. I call it Ganland, because some of it is, there's a lot of Gans that own property through there, that are not opposed to this, by the way. Then, and then I got it in 2015. It had been rental property, and so once the tenants vacated, I moved in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll call back upon the applicant. If you would, gentlemen, one of you designate one of you to do the rebuttal, and let's try to do it in three or four minutes. I know there's a lot, but we have to move along. We have other cases to hear tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, could we split our rebuttal in that our engineer can address some specific things that come better from him than from me, and then I'll be very brief in my summary.
Okay.
Justin, would you come up and talk about the traffic and transportation issue?
Sure. Yeah, a couple of issues that were brought up. One seemed to be a concern of taking or impacting other people's land. Any road improvements that we do would obviously be within the public right of way, so we don't have any authority to design any kind of road improvements on private land. As far as Case Road goes, I mean, the site plan you're seeing tonight is not a complete and total design, so certainly, you know, once we go through our modeling of truck path movements and things of that nature, you know, it's very likely that we would be, we would have a need to widen Case Road up into our driveway. We don't have it dimensioned right now, but it looks to me like it's about 20 feet currently right now, so that would be on the more narrow side.
That the paved surface is 20 feet?
That's what it looks like to me just right now. So that certainly is on the more narrow side of two-way traffic. I can understand people saying, having to stop and have those movements. As far as, you know, traffic safety concerns, I can assure you that, you know, DOT does not hand out commercial driveway permits lightly, and this particular site has had an extreme amount of scrutiny from the department, which is why, you know, we've sort of landed at the geometry that we have for the left turn lane. I will tell you that that design is what we would refer to as symmetrical widening. It would not be, you know, all on one side or the other. We would design from the center line and widen on each side of the right of way. So with that, I have to answer any other questions you might have.
I have a question. On the driveway, your site plan is showing that the driveway is on Case Road and not Highway 704. This is typically, that looks a little unusual to me. Can you explain why that is?
So almost always when we have a site that's located and have an opportunity to access from the side road, that's generally viewed as the more safe option. So DOT would always push us to access from the side road versus the main highway.
And also, with that driveway, there doesn't seem to be a large amount of turnaround for, say, delivery truck. What's, what is the situation there?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, we have to, we couldn't even build the site if we can't demonstrate to DOT and to Dollar General that we can maneuver the trucks in here. So they do, in fact, it will work. You pull into the site, you pull forward across the store, back into the loading area, and pull out. And that's, you know, we can certainly demonstrate that to planning staff, or if we're asked to go through any kind of TRC process, we're happy to do that and demonstrate it.
Also, you show a trash bin in the back. Is that, would you explain exactly what that is, how large, how often it would be serviced?
It's a dumpster enclosure, and I think most of ours are 18 by 12, and so it would have typically those that have a wooden privacy fence to screen it. And the servicing, you know, it's sort of store-dependent on the amount of refuse that they generate, so I would say at a minimum weekly and more frequently as needed.
You don't know how much, you can't give us an idea of how much refuse?
No, that's kind of irrelevant at this point.
I have a question.
No more questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have any idea, just, there's been a lot of conversation about Highway 704. Do you have any idea how wide that highway is? I mean, what's the norm, average, normal?
Typically on.
It has to meet some kind of standard.
Sure, yeah. Typically on, you know, two-way highway, you typically have an average 12-foot lane width. So the existing highway is likely, I don't know if it's dimensioned there, but it's likely 24 feet wide.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I would just like to remind the board, the decision here tonight is not about a particular store, or it's just, it's about a land use and whether, you know, the land use is appropriate in this area, just as if you had a situation where someone was coming in and requesting to locate a fast food store, it wouldn't be about, do you like Bojangles better than Chick-fil-A, better than McDonald's? Those things are not relevant, you know, in these types of discussions and decisions. We wanted to be very clear upfront what we plan to do with, with this property, in that it would be a Dollar General store, because we don't want to hide anything from anybody. But I would remind the board that it's really the land use that you must focus on. We respect all the nearby neighbors and the citizens. We hope that if we're able to build this store, they will be customers one day, you know, and we respect other businesses and local businesses. This is not about trying to put anybody out of business. It's a great thing about this country, you have freedom, you can shop where you want, you can choose to use a particular store or not use a particular store, nor does it matter whether, you know, the store is owned by one of your neighbors or owned by somebody in Danville or Greensboro. That's not really a part of the zoning, but you can, as an individual consumer, you can make that choice if you like. But I would say, you know, we're open to additional conditions, and we're open to further dialogue with the folks who have spoken here tonight, regardless of what happens tonight. You know, there'll be a county commissioners meeting, and we'll be glad to talk to them further. And if there are things that we can do to make this a better project for them, we want to do that in terms of addressing the traffic concerns, addressing the lighting. We have agreed to the dark sky standards as recommended by your, your staff, fencing, screening, anything that we can do, we're glad to do that. We won't, obviously, you don't come into a community, you want to come into that community and do what you can to work with your neighbors, and that's what we'd like to do here. So I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Any last-minute questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, we've been here before a number of times, and it seems like to me that the outcome is going to be inevitable, regardless, I mean, we're going to make our decision here, and we're going to make our recommendation to the board. But, and I do want folks to understand that we don't have a last say-so in this. You've already explained that. But I think that we have an opportunity here to maintain our communities the way we saw fit, the way we saw the broader portion of the land use. So with that, I will not speak anymore, but I am ready to make a motion.
I'd like to add that I think the ones that have been approved before were not near so many houses. This is right in the middle of a cluster of houses. It's going to affect, it's going to affect everybody that lives around it. I mean, light, traffic, would you want to live beside that? I don't, you know, I can't say that I necessarily would, but I would take that into consideration. The ones that have been built and approved are not near this many houses in this kind of a community. That's, that's one thing I want to point out.
I think one of the other points is, I think the lawyer got to it, which was, this is a land use discussion. And I think we heard from all of the people that participated that they liked this rural, this is a, an area where you're out of the city, it is, they like that rural environment. And I think that going from a, an O1 to a, you know, rural area to a commercial is a pretty big leap. And I, so I think that's a consideration we have to put in there, too.
You ready to make?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Chair recognizes Julie Talbott.
In the Rockingham County Planning Board case 2021, Terramore-Madison rezoning residential protected to neighborhood commercial conditional district, the Rockingham County Planning Board has reviewed case 2021 rezoning of, to residential agricultural map amendment and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 6160D. After considering the Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends denial of case number 202122. This request is not consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning amendment does not support the intent and descriptions of O2 land class, rural land class. The permit uses the neighborhood conditional, conditional districts are not compatible with the character of existing development on adjacent parcels in the neighborhood, and the proposed rezoning does not conform to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, O2 Rural Land Class, and Future Land Use Map. The Board considers this action in denying the proposal, proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size doesn't, is not appropriate for the neighborhood conditional district. The proposed use in the district are not appropriate for the land, considering its effect on landowners, neighbors, and the community. The property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential protected but do not feature current uses that match or are similar to those permissible in the proposed zoning district. On balance, the following factors: the size of the tract in question, the compatibility of zoning action with the comprehensive plan, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and the relationship between the envisioned permit use and the uses currently presented in adjacent tracts weigh in denying, in denying the proposed zoning amendment. Huh? Sorry.
A second. Motion has been made and seconded to deny the application for rezoning case number 2021-22. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. Do what?
Thank you.
There being no opposition, the recommendation that the planning board will make and that the county commissioners, is this application be denied?
I read over it, that's okay.
Order, please.
It's on the radar now. I know they will. That's why I'm saying you have to be careful, because you'll get something that's a whole lot worse than that.
You want to get the next one queued up?
Next case on the agenda is case number, where is it here? 2021-23, rezoning from residential agricultural to residential mixed. Application is being made by LGI Homes. Mr. Cochran, if you would, please introduce his case for us.
Chairman Sinewitz, yes, this is request case number 2021-23. A straight rezoning request for a map amendment from residential agricultural to residential mixed, this being residential mixed as defined in the current UDO. There, I need to explain something about the maps when we get there, but there are three primary tax pins that are associated with this. They are all located on both the east and west sides of Highway 220 at approximately Bennett Farm Road and Price Farm Roads. I included a reference address for the largest of the parcels, which is 185 Bennett Farm Road. This, on the west side of 220 is Huntsville. On the east side is New Bethel. Thank you.
Compass.
I know, we're getting there, we're getting there. Again, this is what we call a straight or non-conditional rezoning to residential mixed. This is the vicinity map. It should actually be slightly larger. As you notice, I didn't even put a dot there, because you can see it quite clearly, this is quite a bit of acreage. I just wanted to sort of impress upon everyone the scale of the rezoning request that we're looking at. This is a bit busy, but this is the zoning map for the area. I left the address points on so that you can see that we already have quite a bit of medium-density residential development in the area. If you will note, the largest parcel on the eastern side and the north at 220, the parcel across that street there, that little sort of, I don't know, trapezoid-shaped, kind of trapezoid, is actually included in that tax pin, is the same tax pin. It's on the other side of the road. When we prepared these maps, my mapping system did not pick up that parcel, and I do apologize. However, that parcel is the same pin and is included in this rezoning request, which corrects the acreage from 427 to approximately 530. The other folks who are here, Mr. Dodson and Mr. Kirschner, can speak more a little bit about that. This area does feature in one spot a designated flood plain. It is not a floodway, it is a flood plain. The developers are very well aware of this. Their concept plans take this into consideration.
Is that the one marked Jacobs Creek?
It's Jacobs Creek, yeah. And it's a 100-year flood plain. Otherwise, this area, as you know, is in the lower southwest quadrant of the county, where there is significant pressure for residential development. Our land use plan map essentially strongly supports this request. It is located in the G3 and G2 land classes. G3 is mixed-use corridors, G2 is medium-density residential. The mix of those classes and this proposed rezoning match pretty well, as I've listed out here in the, in my staff report and the multiple points that I quoted from the land use plan and even the infrastructure goals. These properties will, of course, be served by public water and public sewer to achieve the residential density necessary in the residential mixed district. Long ago, these have been farm parcels in the Bennett family going back to the 19th century. I've had these conversations with the Bennetts. This project we sat down and started looking at back in May or June, right after I came back up here first as a planning consultant, so we've been talking about it quite a bit to get it ready to come to at least this stage. The next is just one of the quotes that I pulled from our land use plan that seems this kind of the most extensive about G2 and G3, how they relate to each other and how they are supported. I have paper copies of the land use plan for every single one of the planning board members, ready to bring up here, and forgot to bring them up here. So from now on, I'm going to bring one up before you all home. So from now on, I'm going to bring one up before you are home, and you can flip to page 44, when I say it's on page 44, okay? That was the plan tonight, but there was a lot going on. This case is heavily supported by the land use plan, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail. I do want to make a point. This is, has been discussed in the community. There is a planned community meeting, it is not required, but we have suggested it and the developers have agreed to it, to be scheduled between this hearing and the Board of Commissioners hearing, whereby citizens can come and get more information. We have had a moderate number of phone calls, not a lot, not a whopping amount. No one has expressed any sentiment particularly for or against it, they essentially want more information. Many of these people in the area live in residential subdivisions already, Twin Creeks is nearby, there are other folks who are nearby, and many folks in the area have seen these guys and their teams out there doing some engineering work, surveying, that sort of stuff. It's sort of expected in this area that this kind of thing is coming. In your packet, you will note that there is a concept plan drawing that includes that portion of that parcel on the eastern side of Griffin Road that got dropped from my map, if you see that.
Yep.
I only point that out for your information purposes only. I did not include the concept plan in my slideset here tonight specifically because this is a straight rezoning request. It is not a conditional rezoning request, therefore, even though we all know that residential mixed in this area will be a dense, extremely large residential subdivision, the largest in the history of Rockingham County, that cannot be considered when making the decision for this case, you all know that, we've all discussed this, you know, heavily in the past. You must consider all allowed uses in the residential mixed category. Beyond that, I do not have much to say, this is going to be a biggie. There'll be lots and lots of work with Technical Review Committee when the time comes. If this is approved, this is a goal in the area of this county, as we all know. I've had many communications with the folks who are working on this project. The developers and I, especially the developers, have had many conversations with NC DOT. There's going to be significant planning for connectivity in the area that will come from DOT and from planning, so keep that in mind when the time comes. Again, though, those things are specifics that cannot necessarily be considered when making a decision to recommend approval or denial of this request, so. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer if you have those.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is this site large enough, or is it part in the, in the land use plan where we had those clusters of development? Is this one of them?
Yes. As part of residential mixed, clustering is, is part of that, yes. The residential mixed zoning category allows clustering, it allows for a mix of single-family detached townhomes, duplexes, quadruplexes, cottage courts.
And some commercial, and there's, it includes some commercial in there?
Not technically, and that's a little confusing about the new definition of residential mixed. Residential mixed zone and the G3 corridor mixed-use centers does allow.
Right out of the land use plan.
Does allow for it.
Side of it is the G2.
But it does not specifically allow commercial development. Now, commercial development is part of the proposed future site plan.
Right.
That's going to require an additional rezoning in the future. Right now, that's going to be rezoned residential mixed, that was more of a complex layer that at this point is just perhaps a plan presented in the concept plan. If, generally, at the ordinance right now, if, and we're working on some things to correct sort of this, too, there is a category in the ordinance that is called conditional, mixed-use conditional zoning, which is separate from this. Mixed-use conditional zoning would allow a wide array of densities of housing, including commercial within different areas, and those mixes that you're talking about. Residential mixed, in this case, is a mix of residential housing types. Does that clarify a little bit?
Yeah, and the only reason I asked this question, because when I look at the concept drawing here, I remember that we had a conversation about the, the overall flavor of this would be a community almost, where there would be some small, like, small businesses.
Right.
That, and, and that the land use plan would allow us to, we wouldn't have to be restricted, we could do projects, the county could do projects like this and not be restricted by the land use plan and the ordinances. And I'm just wondering, because I'm not, I don't see anything specific, but could that be part of it, like, like almost a small community within a community kind of thing?
Absolutely, and I think this is the, this is what this will evolve to be, yeah.
This side of it will come after.
After this, after this, but, okay.
I will make one point. On the map, you will note, look to the western side of 220, and how that larger parcel links to 220 via that little small parcel. That is currently showing as residential mixed, however, that has been removed from the request for rezoning. It is currently zoned highway commercial and will remain highway commercial. It will not change the ability to construct any sort of access that we need to, to get in and out, or work with DOT, but there was a request to pull that from the residential mixed request that happened after the time of application, and that has happened. But again, this is just a concept plan, it is not part of, it's something that can be deliberated when making the decision. So on that note, planning staff feels like this is a great plan, and we strongly recommend it given based the land use plan. Questions? I'll be glad to answer anything.
Questions for Lynn Cochran?
No. I will say that the developers are here, the applicants are here, and they were kind to attend, but given that.
They've signed up.
They've signed up, they can speak, but essentially, basically attesting to the rezoning request. You know, keep in mind that conditions are not part of this, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dodson, do you have other people with you? Do you want to go first, or they go first, or you choose?
Either way, have or you best feel.
Okay, well.
Yeah, we can just.
You signed up for, you signed up first, so.
Oh, okay.
For the record, could you just restate your name and your address, please?
My name is Stephen Dodson, I live at 4800 Blanchard Road in Burlington, North Carolina. As Lynn alluded to, I'm here with the developer LGI, Mr. Drew Kirschner. I'm the project engineer of record for this site, and as Lynn alluded to, we've had a lot of upfront discussions about the project with him and other planning staff and the economic developer in Rockingham County. All of those discussions have been very encouraging for the site, as well as it seemingly fits into the land use plan as a, as a good fit for the county in this area. So with that introduction, should you have any questions about the site? I'll help answer, and if they're more specific to housing, or the type of development, or anything related to the, the structures, Drew would be glad to answer that.
I do have a question.
Okay.
I'm not going to get a magnifying glass out here, but.
Sure.
How many lots are we talking about here?
So, the concept plan, as Lynn alluded to, it is just a sketch, but it serves as a starting point to see, you know, what the property could support. As it lays out right now, there's approximately 1,650 lots. That is subject to change based on more detailed design, taking into account topography and other land features. And this layout is also in accordance with the latest Rockingham County ordinance as well.
Any questions for Mr. Dodson? I do have another question. What fire district would this fall in?
It would likely fall in two different districts, Stokesdale and Huntsville.
Yeah, it'd be probably Stokesdale and Huntsville.
Yeah, that's my guess.
All right, thank you, sir. Did, did Mr. Kirschner want to speak?
If anyone has any questions, I'll answer them.
Okay. Also signed up to speak are Mr. John Trinowski.
That would be Trynowski.
Oh, Trynowski, I'm sorry.
That was an error, basically.
You want me to just cross you off?
Yeah, at this point in time, although I'm concerned, I just have a question, if maybe you could.
Well, then you need to come up, sir. I have to state your name and address.
John Trynowski, I'm at 205 Twin Creeks Drive, Stokesdale. And I just wanted to basically come tonight and ask, like, I know it sounds like a lot of the things are still up in the air, basically just started months ago, timeframe on it? Does anybody, can anybody answer that?
I can almost guarantee you that based on the size of this project, you could be looking at a decade to put it up.
Okay, I got you.
Am I close?
Right, is that right?
Absolute completion, that's probably pretty accurate. Typically, between 12 and, say roughly 12 months to get approvals to start construction, then 12 months to put the first lots on the ground, and then we continue on until we're finished. So probably 10 years for total buildout is probably.
Total completion, total completion, I got you.
To actually start pushing dirt, say 18 months-ish from right now would be a good guess.
Okay.
That might be the earliest, based on what could have to go through the TRC and all that.
Right, got you on that. Yeah, I, we moved, just like some of these people from the first case, we moved to the area to be country, of course, I understand people want developments and so on and so forth, this sounds like a bigger project than I thought it might be.
Well, the, the area just east and just west of 220 was designated some time ago, and, and it's now identified as the G3 growth area for the county. And the reason for that is that it's going to be the future I-73, and a lot of water and sewer infrastructure is being put in that area, so it, it's, it.
It's in the making.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's being brought for that exact reason, development is being brought for that exact reason, because all the infrastructure is going to be there for, to support it.
Right, and I see it myself, things happening all around me, but, you know, I know things happen through the years, we've been there 10 years, and we came there because of the rural nature of the, of the property and the development there, and pretty much were assured that there was never going to be anything going in our, basically backyard, but it looks like that is possibly going to be changed, of course. So I know there's nothing to do with progress, but things happen, and we just have to live with it, I guess. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nope. Any questions? No, sir. Also signed up is Debbie Miller.
Debbie Miller?
Lynn Miller, Debbie Miller, no? Well, there's no reason for, to call you back for rebuttal because there's been no opposition to this, so moving right along, any discussion, members? This, oh, to me, it appears as though it is, is just a perfect fit for what the designating of the G3 corridor is all about, and the fact that the whole thing is already capable of being served by public water and sewer speaks volumes for moving forward with it. Motion, anyone?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir. Chair recognizes Mr. James Fink.
The planning board has received case 2021-23 rezoning to residential mixed and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 160D. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case 2021-23. This action is, is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This zoning amendment is supported by the intent and descriptions of G2, G3 land classes. The permitted uses in residential mixed districts are compatible with the character and existing developments of adjacent parcels and in neighborhoods, and B, the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, G2, G3. The Board considers its actions in adopting the proposed rezoning amendment to be reasonable because A, the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential mixed district, B, the proposed uses allowed in the district are appropriate for land considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and the community, and C, the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural, residential protected, residential mixed, highway commercial, and light industrial. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential agricultural, commercial, and industrial uses, and the resident mixed zoning is not according with the zoning characteristics of the area. On balance, the following factors: the size of the tract in question, the compatibility of the zoning action with comprehensive plan, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and four, the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present in adjacent tracks weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the application 2021-23. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, there being no opposition. The planning board votes to make a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve this rezoning application. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Mr. Trynowski. Unless there are any objections, the chair moves that we now recess the planning board meeting and open the public hearing for variance, the quasi-judicial part, and the Board of Adjustment.
Do you need a second for that? Do you need a second for that?
No. Unless there's any objections, we'll just go ahead and do it, okay? Following of the guidelines for this public hearing by the Board of Adjustment, any and all persons who would like to speak regarding this case by the Board of Adjustment must sign the case roster prior to the beginning of this meeting. Any and all persons who would like to speak must be sworn by the chairman prior to the case hearing. Additionally, when recognized, each speaker must approach the podium, state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the Board Chairman. This hearing is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. This means that it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. The Board's discretion is limited. The Board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not a popularity contest, it is a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. Although this meeting is open to the public, everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the Board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this Board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impact on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and must provide the factual evidence upon which they base their. the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. With that, we'll have staff introduce this request for variance, which is case number, hold on. Case number 21, 20-21-24. Mr. Cochran, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, I appreciate it. We received this request for variance after a series of permit applications, inspections. It's a little bit complex, and I'll just start with the basic information here on the slide. The property is located at 190 Bentwiller Road in the New Bethel Township. The essential request is for relief from the required 10-foot side yard property line setbacks in residential districts. This is the UDO reference article, Division Table, Property Line Standards. This is approximate location. It is located in the Winsome Forest subdivision at 190 Bentwiller Way. You can see it there, it's sort of at the end of the cul-de-sac, but some RA zone parcels. This is, the land use map does not apply here. This is just an aerial that shows that there are some ponds and a creek that runs fairly close to this area. There is some tricky topography in and around this parcel, that I'll let the applicant who has put this together explain. A bit of history, the applicant came in and did make an application for his permit, and you'll see in the, in the materials in the packet. The site plan he drew indicated that one side block property line would be approximately three feet from the structure. The permit, based on that site plan, was approved by staff at the time. Do not know if there was an error, if the site plan was not reviewed closely, or exactly what may have happened. But the permit was approved based on that site plan. Having said that, the printed permit and the record of the permit does show what were the required setbacks at the time on the face, which means that that staff member did have to go into our permitting software system and hand-fill in the custom screens for that, so that they would print out onto the permit. Does that make sense? I want to make sure that's a clear point first. Secondarily, once it was permitted, work began. He erected the structure. Building inspections, Mr. Mark Lambert, who is our chief codes inspector, went, what did I say? Oh my God, Mark Lengel is too late, my tongue. Mark Lengel, chief codes inspector, went out to inspect the structure and noted that it seemed to be too close to the property line. It did not seem to be 15 feet away, which was the requirement at the time. But because these permits were not completed in between the time that they were applied for and the new UDO was adopted, he has permit choice. So he can choose the 10-foot setback versus the 15-foot setback, so that's the standard that we're, he's being held to here, the 10-foot setback.
Is he looking for a variance from the 10-foot?
Yes, he's looking for a variance of seven feet approximately from the 10-foot setback to allow an approximate three-foot setback on the one property line that's affected by the encroachment. To help. Mr. Lengel was the one who noticed that. I did just include his inspection report that you'll note in the very small plan at the bottom, noted that building did not meet side yard setback of 15 feet. The rest is electrical permit stuff. He was doing an electrical inspection, but that's how it came to our knowledge. It has been further inspected, and Mr. Lambert, the applicant, is an articulate man, intelligent, has put together a very well reasoned, I believe, application for the variance, citing the hardships as he sees them. As is the case with variance, his staff does not make a recommendation to approve or deny. We just simply present the evidence and leave it to the board. He has included some photos, exhibits, and will be able to present his testimony. I did, do you all, you all do see that, where there is the zoning permit approval and the little site plan snippet to the other side? You guys do see that, right? Okay. It shows that little three feet from fence line marking, and the fence is essentially on the property line.
One of them's got five feet, and the other one's just got three feet.
Right. And so the typical process is that when a site plan comes in, this is, doesn't necessarily have legal bearing on the case, but the typical process is when someone comes in and applies for a storage structure permit, we require a very basic site plan, but it must demonstrate that it meets the setback requirements from the, from the sidelines. It's part of the approval process. Something happened here, we don't know what. It was missed, it was misread, something, but the approval happened. The permit does show, like I said.
Okay, well, let me be clear about one thing here.
Sure.
He's asking to locate the building within three feet of the fence or within seven feet of it?
Within three feet of the property line.
Three feet, okay.
Which would be a variance granted of seven feet from the 10-foot total that would be necessary.
Right.
Is my math right?
Yeah, but if I can clarify that a little bit, Lynn's basing that off the site plan, where it said greater than three feet. In, in reality, it's like four and a half feet out there, just for your information. The applicant's put in here five feet, it's close to that five-foot mark, so it'd be more like a five-foot variance.
Five foot instead of seven, thank you.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Site plan, the one on the back, back right here, just got three feet on it, that was?
That's the initial submitted site plan that says.
He did have that on there when he did submit it.
Site plan had that on there, yeah.
Already there, correct? It's already been erected?
Building has been erected, because the permit was issued based, the permit was issued, the zoning permit, the zoning clearance was given. And once the zoning clearance was given, building, does their inspection, once the structure goes up, and building, Mark Lengel was the one who noted that the setback lines weren't met as were indicated on the permit.
This is one of those cases where the, the building permit got caught in that limbo between the old UDO and the new one. So typically what happens is the applicant is given the choice of which UDO he wants to go by.
You have to go by the date that the, I mean, it looks like, I don't think that you can play between.
You can.
A new one and an old one.
Can, because the new one's less restrictive.
Yeah, for two reasons. It is less restrictive, and state law allows that if from the time an application for development is made until the time it is completed, that a development ordinance changes rules, the applicant has permit choice. That's actually written into 160D legislative language. So he does have permit choice and can choose the 10-foot setback versus the 15-foot setback, even though that was the original. It would be just like someone who submitted another request for perhaps a rezoning, and the zoning categories changed in between, and the rules were more beneficial to that person later than the former, they could choose to go with the later rules. Does that make sense?
The applicant can choose which one he wants to go with?
Yeah, the 15 or 10, which is the less restrictive.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
Yes, if, any come up, I've got my mic. Mr. Lambert's here, and I believe someone else is here to testify on his behalf, so.
Well, let's see who signed up here. Mr. Lambert, you haven't signed up to speak, but you're the applicant, so we need to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, sir, that won't be necessary. We've got it right here on our screens. Oh, yeah. We're saving you a little bit of work here. Now, if you'd come to the podium, you'll see a Bible up there somewhere, and if on it you would place your left hand, and please raise your right hand. Other way around, put your left hand, there you go. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, then now go to the podium, and for the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Mark Lambert, resident of 190 Bentwiller Way, Reevesville, North Carolina.
Okay. If you listen to Mr. Cochran, he made it pretty clear what you're after. We have all the maps showing the detail of where all this is going to take place, and so I guess what we need to know is if there's, is there anything that he did not cover that you would like us to know?
Narrative I'm here to present. Other than the narrative to support my case, I'm here to present.
Okay.
If that's all right.
We'll hear from you then.
Thank you, sir. So first of all, good evening, members of the board. This case is presented on behalf of the owner, myself, Mark Lambert, in support of the variance application demonstrating unnecessary hardship in applying the regulatory property line setbacks for the accessory building. This variance is presented against Article 4, Division 2, for the residential dimensional standards. To begin, the building permit application applied for on April 21st of this year was approved by the Rockingham County Community Development Permitting Department with the intended setback of three feet. That was diligently disclosed and applied during the onsite construction of the building. During construction, I did allow for additional, because there was additional space in the landscape buffer, so we have, so I have five feet from the property line, and the variance is against the 10 feet, therefore the delta is five feet. In summary of the variance application and the exhibits that are presented before you, the owner has factually demonstrated that due to the unique topography of the land parcel and inherent infrastructure of the property, there is cause for unnecessary hardship, which would result in two key points. The first is increasing the risk of soil erosion exposure if the accessory building would be relocated. And from that, you can see from the exhibits, the, the 10% grade, that is both north, south, and east-west, in proximity of the building. Second, preventing the construction of a safe and usable mandatory ramp of the accessory building, and from there, applying the recommended, recommended guidelines for an eight-to-one ramp, which would be parallel to the building. And again, within the encroachment of the landscape buffer. To expand on that statement, the land parcel which has remained unmodified is subject to steep grades, as I mentioned, in the north, south, and east-west directions outside perimeter of the accessory building.
Do with the slope of the land?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
And I'm, I'm confused about one thing. Do you have this, do you have this available?
Not, not next to me.
If you could put that thing up. Lynn, I want to be clear about one thing.
This one?
No.
No.
No. Keep going the other way. One more, one more, one more.
That's it, sorry.
Get this one.
In the packet?
Yeah.
Not included in the slides? I'm sorry.
You don't have those slides for the, up there for the packet?
No.
Oh, okay. Because. I don't have a page number.
Exhibit A, yeah.
Exhibit A, okay. In the orange color, he shows existing building. And then on, in yellow, he shows a new building.
That's correct. Just to be clear, on the top, where the deep orange, that's already existing storage building, which is 12 by 16. And the building that's in this, that's in question today is the lighter orange or the yellowish color at the bottom. So that, that is the.
The yellow one is where you're asking for the change in setback?
That is correct, sir.
Now, the orange one, does that fall within the setback?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So you're going to have two buildings?
Another building, too.
Well, I guess.
That's the one he's talking about.
I guess you can have as many buildings as you like. Okay, I'm, I'm clear what we're doing now. Thank you, sir. Any, any questions for Mr. Lambert?
I have a couple of questions. In the, in your exhibits, you showed that this is a pretty densely wooded area. So this building's already sitting here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is it?
That's the new one?
Yeah, the new building, the new building. And is it visible by your neighbors?
It is visible from the immediate neighbor, but not from the cul-de-sac.
Not from cul-de-sac. Oh, okay. And granting this, or not granting this, is not going to, would it change the sightline either way? I mean, of course, the sightline is going to remain where it is if we grant. If we don't grant, does that change the sightline?
When, when you mentioned sightline.
Yeah, if you, if you have to move the building five more feet.
Have to move the five, the building five more feet, it would be basically exposed to the elements, as I mentioned. And if I'm, if I would, if you would, if the board would allow me to complete my narrative.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So just to continue, for this reason, the accessory building was purposely located within a safe and stable zone, which is consistent with the approved permit application to mitigate the challenge, challenges of the grading and the topography. As shown in the exhibits, the building zone is contained between the property line and a dry riverbed within the landscape buffer. The design and location of the riverbed are such in order to allow for efficient drainage and prevent soil erosion. In conclusion, I am requesting this exception based on this narrative, the evidence presented before you, and the hardship that would be caused. To conclude on these four points, for one, there is cause for hardship by applying the regulation due to the resulting effects of the natural topography and limitations of the property leading to an alternate building site. The hardship is not self-inflicted, as the top, as the topography has remained unmodified and is inherent to the land parcel. Third, the result of this variance request would remain harmonized with the intent of the ordinance while considering the safe placement of the accessory building does not present burden or hazard to the environment while maintaining a high standard for its construction. And last, the owner, myself, has acted in good nature and in good faith with the construction in accordance with the, with the approved building application. This concludes my narrative. I'd like to express my gratitude to the members of the board for taking this time this evening. Thank you. I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Yes, hold on, Matt Cardwell's. So how come you decided to put the building on this side and not back where, in proximity to the other building you had?
The slope.
There wasn't a, there's not a. The slope comes down.
This is, all we're looking at is the new one. We don't know what slope, well, the old one is.
Well, that's why I asked the question, is there a?
The main reason was proximity to the dwelling. The, the slope and the proximity as you enter the backyard is, is getting challenging. My wife and I are not getting younger, and there's been some accidents after some heavy rains. So the idea was to have something in the proximity. And the first storage building was installed when we didn't have a fence, so it was quite easy for, at that time, for House of Stars in Madison to come in with their big truck and, and put it. And since the fence, and at this time, there was basically no one willing to drive there, and there are some constraints in the landscape, so it was built on site.
And then if you move the building five feet further, you'd be building it over the top of the dry riverbed?
Yeah. Yes, the dry riverbed would have to be basically reconstructed, but then you're, you're changing the dynamics of the slope. You may notice that on one of the exhibits, the dry riverbed is expressly, was expressly located at the crest to basically break the, the velocity of any surface runoff.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my question is, why didn't you build it on the other side of the, your drainage right there, and put it in the grass area?
Other side of the drainage. I'm not sure if you noticed where the light blue...
Field is farther over. It's way over.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Over Exhibit A for a second.
The slopes of both is the same all the way through there, even over in the grass area is where the building is.
Yes, it is sloped.
You could have put it in the grass area, correct?
I'm not sure where you're referring to exactly.
Across the other side of your... That rock lined, what you have labeled as a riverbed.
He's speaking of over the riverbed in this area.
In this area?
Yeah.
You're challenged with the same slope at that area?
It's the same where the building is and where the grass is, it's the same. You've got about a four-block difference on one end of your building to the other. It would be the same in the grassy area. Excuse me.
Correct, but that... Yes, you're absolutely right, sir.
So you could have put it in the grassy area.
That was a possibility, but it is exposed to surface runoff more than it is in this area on the landscape buffer.
It would be about the same on either side. I mean, looking to me, because they're both... They're both the same, pretty much, it's on the same slope.
Yes, sir. On the slope, it is the same.
That's my question.
Any other questions?
Sir, in your mind, did you have an approved variance prior to the placement of this building?
No, sir.
Sorry?
Your question is, had an approved variance before?
In your mind, before the placement of this building in its current location, did you have an approved variance?
No, no, sir. The building was erected based on the application that was approved.
You got a building permit for it, James.
I think he's not understanding the question.
Staff talked about that we made a few mistakes. So in your mind, you had an approved variance before you built it, correct? In other words, you thought you built it where you had enough variance and setback was enough?
Correct, in that aspect, yes, but it wasn't, you know... It wasn't self-implied, I would say. I built it according to, but it can be considered as if it was approved with the variance.
What Mr. Fink is asking is, you felt like you applied, you did every... You did your due diligence, and you felt like you were putting the building in the correct place according to the permit or according to the application. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am. Yes.
That's what we're after.
Stating that for me.
I'm sorry.
A second question. I'm assuming that we have the adjacent owner here tonight? Is that true?
Yes. I'm surprised to see Mr. Keith took time.
Well, he's got to come up, and he signed up to speak, so we'll get to him. Okay, any further questions for Mr. Lambert is what I want to know. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, members of the board.
And now, if Mr. Keith Paul will come forward. And if you would, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. "Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?" Okay, step up to the podium, and please let us have your name and address for the record.
Keith Paul, 180 Bentwillow Way. So I am the immediate neighbor adjacent to Mr. Lambert. And I kind of didn't know exactly what to expect here in terms of necessity of bringing evidence and so forth, but I do think that Mr. Lambert did bring up a very important point in terms of the topographical and topographical issues with the properties that we have, particularly with those two close ponds. There is also a creek that runs behind both properties, and those ponds do overflow with heavy rain, which is why the fence lines do not go all the way back to the end of the property lines. That land back there where it's really heavily wooded really does not... would not hold any significant weight with heavy rains. And, you know, if there's one property that probably has worse topographical issues, it's probably my backyard. And so actually, where he put that building, where he... I do think that that was more than appropriate, just looking at it. And it does not bother my wife or myself with him having the building where it is. And he is... It is out of line of sight from the cul-de-sac, so it is not, you know, going to cause any issues with the HOA.
Mr. Paul? Okay, well, thank you very much, sir. This appears to be a harmless undertaking based on an assumption that issuing of the building permit included its location as being okay, so it doesn't seem to be harming anybody, so my inclination is that we go ahead and approve the variance, but we'll need a motion to do it.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the variance request.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the variance request. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, there being no opposition. Sir, your variance is granted. And now, unless there's any objections, we're going to adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting and reconvene the Planning Board meeting. Planning Board is now back in session. And before we listen to any further business, let me check my agenda here. See if it's somewhere. What happened to my agenda?
Oh. What happened to your agenda?
Okay.
You just have to hear what's after.
Yeah. All right, before we do anything else, I'm going to pass these around. Here's one for you and Cindy. These are the latest minutes. We're not going to vote on these tonight. We'll do the same as we did last time. Take them home with you, read it over. If you have any corrections, make them, and we'll vote on these minutes at the next meeting.
It's October.
Oh, here's my agenda. Did you get yours back?
Yes.
I didn't mean to steal it.
No, you're fine. No, I got it.
Oh, and here's a blank one that I got in there. Next item is other business, and our Community Development Director, do you have any updates for us?
I do. Just last week, Lynn and I participated in a brief webinar from the state. FEMA will be updating our flood maps. We're one of the group of counties next in line. This has been a 10-year process all across the state. I've already gone through this twice, luckily, because I left one job after doing it and started another job doing the same thing again. So it's a fun process going through this. It looks like a lot of our flood zones actually have been more properly mapped and more accurately mapped, so we're losing a little bit of flood zone area. Only one new building's being brought in, but no buildings are going out. The municipalities are going to be hit a little bit harder than the county is as a whole, but when those maps come through, they are adopted as part of the zoning... Part of the UDO. So we will have to go through a formal adoption process for those maps, but before that even happens, we're talking about maybe getting the preliminary maps, official preliminary maps in January. So it'll be about a six-month to eight-month process at the very minimum before we even finally get the maps to adopt. The community will have a lot of opportunity to speak with FEMA, talk to their insurance agents. We'll hold traditionally, since we're not experiencing that much of a change in mostly of our zones, we'll most likely only hold one community meeting unless more are requested, but I will be offering my services to the municipalities to assist with them as well. But those... Sorry. Those maps get really contentious for the property owners, the effect. And as always, if you know someone that's in a flood zone or whatever, tell them to come talk to me. I can bring up the preliminary maps and go over what might be already affecting them so they can get ahead of the game. Because when they finally make those officially preliminary, then they'll be accepting comment periods before they make changes again, and then issue them out, final preliminaries for adoption.
And when do you expect that we'll see copies of these, at least the preliminaries?
January is what we were told. They're up digitally for us to have professionally to take a look at so that the community itself can comment, but those aren't widely available for public review yet. But I'm happy to go over it with people without giving them the website and access like that, but I can go over their individual parcels with them. But the actual maps should be in our hands in early first quarter.
Okay.
And that's all I pretty much have. Other... Well, we have... We have a couple of issues with mobile homes that we're trying to find a way to resolve. Former UDO had more zoning options for mobile homes, and what we're finding with the new rules is we've got some stuck properties, subdivisions that were nothing but mobile homes, may not be completely sold out, but now can only have detached single-family residential. So the realtors themselves are asking us if we can find options to help out. So we're talking to a few of them. We're looking at options, and we've also run into problems with places that maybe have legacy zoning issues. So that's just on our radar right now, that we maybe come to y'all for some just preliminary discussions, but before we do amendments on how we should approach. But that's one of our hot topics right now.
The short version of that is when REM status and characteristics changed in August 2021, it now means something very different than it used to. That's the short version.
If we don't find some way to actually address it, we'll probably be having rezoning after rezoning after rezoning requests from people, and what we want to try to do is avoid that and just go ahead and nip something in the bud and create a solution.
When do we get copies of the UDO?
I will do my best to get those printed for you and ready for your next meeting.
Before any of you leave this building tonight, I have printed copies of the land use plan downstairs, okay? Meet me in the lobby. I'm going to give them to you.
But also keep in mind, the UDO is online, and as we keep changing it, real quickly, we'll try to issue blue pages as well for any amendments after I get you printed copies.
Do you adjourn?
Who would like to make the motion to adjourn?
I just did.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, there being no opposition, the meeting is adjourned.